...meeting with the City of Vernon on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to order.
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you and take care of the city business. We ask you to let you have your hand upon us in your name and prayer.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, in the Republic of which is China, one nation, under God, indivisible, we declare your justice.
This is the employee meeting. We were given evaluations to do on the clerk. I'm gonna go ahead and let everybody know that I was not able, mine is not complete. We received them yesterday evening, afternoon. Is that what that was for? Because he didn't say anything. It just, I thought it was an example of the law.
No.
Yeah, I know we had two of them. But I thought that we just got them now and we were supposed to do it in the next.
Well, it was, it was kinda unclear. I thought that we were supposed to do it and bring them to meeting because y'all wanted employee meeting. And so I'm just like, no, that mine is not complete. We didn't get it on Friday. There were additions for that, so we got it this evening. If everybody wants to complete those and have them for the next meeting, I guess that would be.
The next would be a workshop, right?
No, our next meeting is a national meeting.
It's likely that's right.
Is that agreeable with everybody? Ms. Karen, have you done an evaluation on the deputy clerk? You have, you have copies for him?
Well, I was gonna ask you, do you want copies with the signatures or without, or?
Before she goes over it with her, if you want.
Y'all need to look at it before I go over? I mean, are we going to over it again?
Ms. Jeremy, do you have any thing on that? I'm not sure.
I have.
If we're supposed to get a copy of them before or after?
Subject, that subject to the council's approval after it's done.
Can I do, so does that mean I do, I counsel her and let her sign my side, or is that private, or are we doing the meeting? I mean?
I would, I would recommend or suggest doing that privately, counsel the employee, do that council privately, have her sign it that's submitted to the full council for your, for y'all to approve that and review it.
Okay, so have her do it privately. Okay. And sign it and then proceed. Counsel with the copy that we just sent. Yes.
Yes.
After we sign it. And does the mayor need to sign it first also, or is that after?
Yeah, I would need it after.
Okay.
Jason does the same thing with his?
Yeah.
No, it does say man's signature on there. He does say that.
Does say mayor's signature.
Yeah, but Ms. Jeremy, you say we should, after we view it, then the mayor signs off on it?
Yes, ma'am. Y'all's are a little bit different for, for the city clerk because it's a little bit different than the prior ordinances and decisions that were made to give that power to the council. So I understand that all of y'all would submit yours, sign them, and then vote on them.
As far as council goes, we have to, we don't do ours privately with the clerk. It'll have to be done in open meetings, mind, is that correct on that?
You, you would do your own individual evaluations and the discussion about it would be open and your discussion with her would be open. So a little unusual, but it's just because of the, the clerk would be dealing with employee just as ordinance that y'all dealing with her in an open meeting. So it makes it a little different.
Okay, and to clarify, the reason that these are going on, I know that all employees evaluations supposed to go on, I believe it's once a year. I'm not sure on that, but the reason for, for these evaluations is because both employees are new and their probationary period is all up. That's when we're doing theirs or why the clerk's is being done and the deputy clerk's is being done. Council will have to set a time.
Whatever, do we, how long has it been here?
That's what I'm saying. The public works director, saying that the clerk would do the employee evaluations and then we would do one on him. Generally, it's done once a year, but that hasn't been the case for quite a while.
So we need to do it now.
So at, at council's will, but the reason for this one is because these are the new hires and they're trying to.
And from my understanding of the employee handbook that y'all, y'all's employees are governed by, and for a new employee, there's a three month, a six month, and a twelve month that we're catching up with.
Okay. And this is the first one. This is the three month that we'll be doing. So do we need to provide the public works director with one to do for his?
How long, Chad, have you, how long you been back?
Five months right now. Next, six months on the eleventh of next month.
So we need to do a six month on here. Will you do?
Kind of about eight, four, eleven.
Yeah, see, one happened to none. That's why I'm saying, as council's will, we'll need to do one on public works director and you'll need to do one on his employee.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess if, if it's okay with council, we'll go ahead and take care of all of it at once. The public works director and a evaluation sheet, I guess we're gonna need another sheet and we'll take care of all of that at the next.
They won't need one for him.
That way.
But then Jason is going to need two, four, two.
Yeah. But Karen can give you the, we need one for him and you need two for him.
What can I strike you, what can I do to get them through? Is it something that the city already had, or is it?
Actually, it's my understanding, and Karen can clarify, I believe that that is one that they could not find. So they had to take the suggestion, I believe, by Rose, do can it, blackout, that, that's the same one that's been in the files previously, but they could not find a blank one. So what they did was they took that, took the information off of it, scanned it in, so we would have clean copies. I'm assuming now you have clean copies on the computer, so just like that, that's what it looks like.
I thought, it's not beautiful, but it's serviceable.
Right.
The best we could do.
Yes. But this is the same that was, the last one that was used?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Does anybody have anything that they need to say? About why this meeting was called, or does anybody need to say anything?
Quick question?
Yeah, y'all just need one more evaluation or two?
No, we need one for the public works director. He needs two, four of them.
For them.
Okay. Clarify down there. Does anybody want to start or have anything to say? Well, the reason it was called was because of the emails.
Did we get that situated? Or the email situated?
No, no, talking about the emails that were sent and the letter that was provided, giving details of situation in the clerk and deputy clerk. Remember, that's why I said let's have an employee meeting. Barbara called them to email that we're all given copies of and the letter at the last meeting.
Well, I know what's going on. But anyway, I'll say something. Please understand that please don't blow your ass.
He is mean.
The, these emails, this drama inside the office makes this stop. We need to work together, or we're gonna have to separate some. We're gonna do this evaluation, and then we're either gonna move forward, or we're gonna replace. I'm, I'm not one to play with drama, never have been, never will be. I'm never politically correct by no means. I love every one of my employees. I want a business intact. I got the love of my employees because I want my business to continue to improve and do good. Please, let's not do this because I want to see this city succeed with the people that we have here, but if we can't, we'll have to fix something about that, and I'm sorry.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like to say that I'm a member of this town and a member of this city council. I have a right to my opinion. I have a right to voice my opinion. And you guys jumping on me last week because I've voiced an opinion and threatening me, I didn't appreciate it. And so I'd like to ask that that not happen again.
I would, I'd like an explanation because I had no idea.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
She said I would not get reelected. She said it like four or five times.
I didn't say that. Say who said it. Who said it? Who said it? Joey said it.
Didn't she, and you know?
I know. Joey said it.
Okay.
Okay, don't say that out loud.
All right.
Wait a minute.
All right, it's coming from that direction.
Well, I didn't say it. Okay, thank you. Joey, who said it, Joey? Thank you.
Okay, Joey.
You need to get yourself straight. I don't play like that, okay? Telling you, I don't.
I'm right.
I'm right. You did. No, I didn't do that.
So.
Okay, so I was, I'm assuming that we were talking in the context of when we were speaking about Fourth of July.
Yes.
It was that.
It was an immediate.
I thought that it was a judge matter.
It was a joke.
It was the way that I took it. Because, and the reason I say that is because we have this conversation every time the Fourth of July comes up, basically, about people. Okay, well, you have big years to follow, so.
That's why I took it, the way I took it.
Okay, well, I certainly didn't take it that way at all.
I wasn't direct, or did you have?
No, but it was very nice that you.
No, it was very nice that you took the time to say what you said. I appreciated that.
Okay, well, again, the reason I asked for clarification is because I had no idea how you felt you'd be a threat. The community saying that we do is the Fourth of July. That's basically what we do for them. And we, in no way, ever want to take anything away. Which is why I myself was upset and expressed that, and I'm not the only one that did, over the way that this last one was handled possession and stuff like that. So in my mindset over here, I certainly did not take it the way that you just expressed what was said and who said what, so.
Well, the thing about it is, is the next day, I went and asked like twelve people, and all twelve of them were, what? Over the price of those fireworks.
Okay, well, I, like I told you at the last meeting, please feel free to get on the phone.
Yes.
And call and ask, find out their, Karen has some information on what, the timeframe that we use, the size of the fireworks. I can talk with each other personally myself, and feel free to call and get your own.
See, because I found out Bonaparte and McKinney, I can get theirs donated. The city doesn't pay for it. So there's other places, so that's right. We should go around to some of the town businesses and hit them up.
But yeah, and I, I agree with that, that doesn't.
Not this year, not this year, I know.
That's not saying that, that it's cheaper, that they're cheaper than the prop. We're just saying that they're being donated. That's completely different thing.
Sure, but I mean, it's like coming out of the city budget. Because everybody, I mean, the first thing out of almost all of them was my road. And I said, well, you know, eighteen thousand dollars can't fix a road, but it could certainly fix a pothole like what's down here at the end of the street and down at the end of the other street. There's little things that it could do. And so I thought, yeah, if you guys don't mind, we could approach some of the businesses and say, would you at least kick in? If we only had to pay nine thousand dollars, that would be an amazing benefit to the city. And I mean, I don't know that it's so much to ask because I was, I'm writing a letter now to the CEO of Dollar General and those guys because, let's face it, we're gonna give them a lot of business here.
Well, and there, there has been talk, most recently, I believe, Mr. Ruby brought up some fundraising ideas, things that we can do, some advertising, something for the Fourth of July as well. That's what I would understand. But the process and having somebody that is licensed to come out and do it.
Right.
I think if you give a little deeper with the policy, you'll find that they actually have somebody that certified, that they've had for a long time. And that's why they're able to, to do theirs, even when other places weren't able to get them.
No, but I think that you have a, a heavy burden on you about a lot of that stuff, and I'd be willing to help you because it just means walking around and asking people kind of sort of.
Okay, well, and honestly, it's not on me. We just had two mishaps back to back. Generally, it's a matter of the clerk processing it and keeping up with when things are supposed to be paid, when you can't supposed to approve it. And that was, that got slipped, and so we lost back to back where we had, yeah, we, we lost the actual people that came out and do it. They couldn't over it in time, and it was over. Issues that weren't taken care of properly. That's why I said, well, we want to do it early this year and get it set by council, so we don't run into that a third year.
And the reason we said that this fourth year, because the year that we didn't have it, he was on the council, we got beat up. Year that we didn't, and it was because of the flood, we didn't have it. There was a catastrophe. We didn't have it, okay? And it's still a sin and act like we about bought. And the whole city was flooded on the Fourth of July. We could not have it. And I mean, we caught it because we didn't have it. I'm telling you, they were like.
Well, even during COVID, when we made the decision not to have it, and I mean, basically, everything was shut down at that point. We made the decision then because the provider wanted an exorbitant amount upfront and did not want to say, okay, if you're not, if you don't have it, I'll give you that money back. They wanted to hold it for the next year, and that was not what the council could do at that time and didn't want to do. And so, and then, and then the problems after that happened. So with that being said, we're here for the community and the Fourth of July is basically what the city gives them every year. It's for the, you know, kids love it, families come together. So we want it to be bigger and better every year. So I, I don't have a problem with fundraising and I don't have a problem with any of that. But as far as the, the actual expense of them from the company and getting booked in time, I guess that, that's going to, they told us that for the last two or three years.
And then everyone's gone.
Yes, ma'am. So we got it last, last time was sixteen five, I believe the year before that was fourteen.
Every year, fourteen, twelve, which is being for budget.
Well, what, we had budgeted last year was sixteen five, and from everybody's standpoint, they did a really good job. And I would like to see us continue with them and keep them long term. Because this is, it's, from what I've been told, it's not going to go away. Their companies are closing down and downsize, as it's called, of shipping issues and the pricing, because where they come from.
And that's the one thing that we can do for students. I mean, I feel that's one thing that we can do for them. What else do we do for them? And they do enjoy that. They enjoy those fireworks.
Yeah, they enjoy the parade, they enjoy.
And the parade, they enjoy it. Fourth of July is a big thing.
Standoff.
The only thing they complain about this year from kids, they have nothing to do. But otherwise, they were there for that, and they enjoy it. I mean, they show up and they enjoy it.
And all of that, but we have actually people from other communities.
They come.
Our work team. The more that come and use concessions and stuff like that, the more money it brings to town, the more money it brings into RAC, so we can do more every year. It's why they're all here.
And some of the stores do make money because people come to the parade, or it's hot, they go to the Dollar General and different places and they buy stuff. Because it's hot, they buy drinks, ice, and stuff. So everybody, it does help the community. It does help them.
But, and going back to you feeling attacked, again, it was just our conversation as far as the way that things went from the Fourth of July. And you would not have known that, and so I can understand why you took it that way, but initially I did not at all because I knew the error is going to be with me.
Just a question.
Does anybody have anything else on that? Or anything to do with what's been placed before, as far as employees and the issues before I?
May I say a couple words?
Sure.
And before I start, I want y'all to be assured that Rose and I have spent most of the day. Sorry. Going over a lot of stuff, but I, I really feel the need to get, to say this to all of y'all. And if Gary was here, it would be directed at him also, but it's directed at all the council, and Michelle was here, so it's directed at you, Jeremy. But first of all, I want to thank you all for hearing me today. Rest assured that nothing I am saying in this statement will be a personal attack on anyone. I simply want you to know what's in my heart. I was and continue to be thrilled that you chose me as your city clerk. I see this as a great opportunity for me personally, as well as an opportunity to make a difference for you and the City of Vernon. We are facing many challenges from the past, but we have made some great strides moving forward. City Hall is no longer a place that customers and employees avoid because of negativity and inefficiency. Many of our customers, vendors, and city employees have expressed their satisfaction with the clerk's office. And while our bookkeeping is not totally accurate, we have consistently moved towards total reconciliation. In regards to the creation of a budget, we are dealing with problems of inaccurate accounting and past due budgets. Outside vendors having incomplete work required to establish account balances and other factors. My responsibility is to receive and compile data into a working budget. I cannot and should not be held responsible for the inaccuracies of past clerks and councils, the incomplete work of vendors outside this office, or incomplete info from outside sources. This is asking me, as your clerk, to take inaccurate information and turn it into factual data, which is impossible. We all knew it was going to be a challenge getting the city affairs in order. These problems didn't happen in a short time, and they are certainly not going to be resolved in a few days, weeks, or even months. However, I am still committed to making our city financially sound and our city hall and clerk's office competent and able to handle the needs of the community. I am asking for your continued support in this endeavor. I know that the cooperative effort by everyone involved, we can achieve our goals together. I thank you again for hearing from me today. Let's move forward together in a spirit of unity and trust, and that we all have one goal in common, and I'm including Rose, because it's her goal as well, that is the success of this city and of our citizens. Because I'm gonna tell you, that girl right there this past, I'd say two weeks, she has discovered something that she will fill you in on when she gets all her data together, that, but if she hadn't have been looking into it, we wouldn't have found it. I wouldn't have known about it. She's been an integral part of that city hall. The last two weeks, she has gone in there, and I'm gonna tell you, the people, they like her. If you haven't gotten any word on this, she reads, that they like her. Not just on the phone, but when they come in person. When I, if she isn't at lunch, I mean, I have on myself, the first question they ask her, where's your partner at? She's at lunch, you know, she's allowed to take her lunch. So she have, like I said, y'all, it was a bumpy start. It was a very bumpy start. It was handled wrong on my part, everybody's part, and, and I have apologized to her, like I said, me and her sat this morning for a very long time. I have great confidence in her. Very, and I told her that this morning as well. She, her ideas with passion from the rec department. She took it upon herself. She made forms. She got with Timothy. I think he may have wanted to balk a little bit, but she stood her ground. And now, when the rec money comes into our office, she can tell you exactly where it's coming from because it's on that form. She's standing there and she counts it with him. She makes him sign that form. She signs it. We sign forms. We, like I said, she though did this, not me. She did. She, I don't want her going nowhere. If you decide to keep me, please keep her. I don't want her going anywhere because you're not gonna find another deputy clerk. That's good, Rose. I'm telling you that right now. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Karen. Rose, do you have anything to say at this time?
Um, before I say this, um, since the whole thing started with the email stuff, I've got them. I know what they say. Things have honestly been pretty awesome, like we've been getting along real good and everything like that. Like if we could stay just like it is right now, we'd be great. However, if you did read the emails, there is some stuff in there that I don't feel comfortable being accused of and not being able to answer those accusations. And I did put something together. I just finished it today. That's why it wasn't in your packet. I've been sitting over here shivering because I'm like kinda scared to give it to y'all. But I do, I do want to have the chance to stand up for myself, and I don't want y'all to feel like I'm trying to cause problems. I'm not. But there is some things that was thought or said, or that I'm not comfortable wearing that without being able to say, hey, this is my side. So I don't necessarily want to drag it out right now because we're not doing the evaluations right now, right? But I can give y'all these if you want to look over them. And if you, I guess we're gonna have another employee meeting probably, yeah?
No, we're gonna have, we're gonna discuss it all and have the evaluations ready at Monday's meeting.
So then we can, if you got any questions about this Monday, I reckon y'all will ask me them. And like I said, I don't want nobody to be in the trouble. I can't do this by myself. Guys, y'all, y'all, y'all ain't getting no budget. Because I don't have any idea how to do it. I'm just being dead honest with you. I, I don't know, I can't do it by myself. And if everything can stay just like it's been since right after this happened, we'll be good to go.
Well, if you talk to each other, you said you sit down and talk to each other.
We did, we have.
Maybe you can ask it out.
Can I ask your questions?
There's no place going to be perfect. No place. I don't care who you work with, you're not gonna be perfect. And you, with your own family, you're not perfect, so.
My dogs think I'm perfect.
We almost don't. You're not perfect, so. And you're always gonna have problems with people that you work with. I mean, that's just the way it is. And it's always gonna be something. I mean, it just is. You don't have a perfect world.
Ms. Rose is gonna ask you a question?
I thought you had one, Jeremy?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Oh, well. I'm sorry, y'all.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rose, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
In your response to the allegations, is the information that we discussed when I questioned you the other day in this packet for council?
Uh, yes, ma'am. For the most part, yes, ma'am. I don't remember every particular thing that we discussed, but the, yes, the bulk of it's in here.
Okay, well, with that being said, it is how I have not read this. I will keep my comments to myself until Monday's meeting on this because of the emails and this is the letter that was presented to us at the last meeting that was written to me and Michelle, that everybody got a copy of, that was accepted from the email. After that, I was requested to come and witness, myself and the mayor, the close of day for the deputy clerk. Because our clerk had a doctor's appointment, and under the circumstances at the time, she did not feel comfortable closing a lawn and counting down the drawers. So Mr. Gary, the mayor, and myself met up here and witnessed that being done. And after the fact, I asked her about the things that were in the. And after the fact, I asked her about the things that were in the email. And she reported some information to me that I, as you all know, we've been here before. An employee reports something to a council member, we had to bring it before council, but hasn't. She has responded to this. I'm not gonna say anything tonight. And I'm gonna see if the things that she told me that gave me concern, that y'all needed to know about, are in here. And if they're not, then I will report that on Monday if that's okay with you guys. Because honestly, there's no sense.
Is this something that I don't have, if I can't be prepared to say before Monday night?
If this is, well, you got a copy of this, Rose?
No, I've been on.
I can send you one.
She can give you a copy of this. And what I'm saying is, if it's in here, then all council needs to know is that I had a conversation with her and she had these responses that council needs. But from what she's saying, she has responded to this, so it probably already is. So I'll feel at the time, and these things. If it's not in here, I'll address it Monday. If that's okay with you. We agree? That being said, does anybody else have anything to do with employees? Any? Everybody good?
I got one thing to say. I'm gonna read over this and I'll back my board, watch y'all decide. I won't be here next week. I'll be out of town. But I look at it and I wasn't at the first meeting when this issue started. My opinion, both of the employees is new to the city of Vernon. I went back and looked at both of their resumes when they put in for their application for the city. And with that said, almost time I've been part of both of them. I've come up here and deputy clerk, I paid my bill, yes ma'am, no ma'am, and walked back out the door. Same as Karen. I have not, I think, one time since Karen's took the clerk position, signed checks, I think. I might have signed it twice. But still, with that said, the budget's the biggest issue. I'm not saying our deputy clerk. What you run into, any city clerk, deputy clerk, both of them new to their positions, is the clerk, deputy clerk, no more than clerk. I'm not here to say she does or she don't. But the thing is, the duties that follow in both positions. The council members have to look at the duties. And as a council member, been here fourteen years, going on it. Talking about the budget, I knew it was gonna be a problem before we come to this. I knew it six months ago, I did. Does it fall on the previous clerk? I can't say it does or does it not. But the thing is, or the clerk's position. Our clerk, whoever it may be, they will pay me out, should, if they're equipped for that position to whatever they need for the educational wise, they need to come forward and mention it to the board or somebody, the mayor or whatever, say, listen, you know, I know the budget's coming up. You know, I need help. You know, I know that my board hired her some help. Did it help her? I don't know. I know we got a bill coming that our current explaining that we're gonna be shot. I haven't seen the bill yet.
I have a copy that I'm gonna give to everybody tonight.
You do?
Yes, sir, I do, and now?
And the thing is, as a council member, we running so close on items being spent, I'm talking about big amounts of money. And, uh, and I don't know this bill, what's the total gonna be. Did it help her? I don't know if it helped her or not. We ain't got no closer to getting the budget solved than I know of. You know, we in the same boat that we was two meetings or two workshops ago. But with that said, I want council to understand, I don't know what's going on before our deputy clerk, y'all, until I read this packet, like you said, Becky, and I won't be here, but I'm gonna back y'all on whatever y'all decide to do. But, uh, but y'all understand that any position, you learn, you learn. You make mistakes, we all make mistakes, I made mistakes, we all make mistakes. But, uh, with that said, I'm not gonna sit here as a council member and a board member and put up with no childish, from neither one of y'all. So the thing is, if you can't work with a clerk, we got a problem. If clerk can't work with you, we got a problem. So the thing is, if you don't do your job, her job's gonna get in trouble. And she don't do her job, the city's gonna be in trouble. And that's where we at right now. And I'm not blaming nobody, but I'm telling y'all, we've been through this and been through this for years. And, uh, and we ain't above firing somebody. Y'all seen that, in fact, but I hope it don't come to that. You know, but the thing is, if we got a problem, it's now or never. Y'all speak up now because I'm gonna back my board when I come back from vacation, whatever it's that. You know, I'm gonna back them hundred percent. So, tonight's the night. Y'all say your piece and, and so be it. But, uh, if I don't say my piece, y'all don't know. Y'all don't know where I stand. The thing is, I want to see the best for the city of Vernon. And I'm gonna see the best for the city of Vernon, I'm gonna back my board, whoever it may be. Do we always get along? Do we always make the right decision? No, but I go down there and still eat at the Jack's Nest. Is Chad always going along with me? No. But that's why you got a five board member board to make decisions, the right decisions. And we think that leave the city for simple as that.
Well, I thought we agreed last week that she was entitled to some help and that she was gonna get it. And then we just agreed that we have to go home and read this and come back on Monday. So if you're gonna back the board and everybody reads this over the weekend, then we'll decide and you back the board. Because I don't think it's appropriate to do it now, unless you want to stop and.
I'm not gonna do it now because like you said.
We haven't read this, so we need to read it and see what it says and decide.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked, that was what we discussed in here. So if it is, I don't need to.
Do anything else?
I don't need to say anything because in here is in here. So with that being said, can I respond to one of his remarks, please?
Yes, thank you. I spoke with Lee, Mr. Stevenson, about the bill that I did receive. I emailed him, but I also spoke with him on the phone. These charges that Michelle accused me of asking him to do work outside the scope of his contract was part of the cleanup process that he said he spoke to Becky about. So this was not on me. I didn't ask him to do anything he wasn't supposed to do. This was part of the cleanup process for the reconciliations. And he said if he needs to discuss that further with y'all, he will.
Okay, Michelle's not here, I'm trying to recall, I don't know that it was.
He said he spoke to Becky, y'all.
Anything?
Uh, she did. She flattered it because she yelled at me and put her finger in my face. So, yeah, I've got an issue with that, then that will be dealt with. Because I'm not gonna be treated like that.
Okay, hold on, wait.
And it's on video.
And this is, Michelle discussed a number of different items with me before tonight, but this is not one that she and I discussed. I don't have any additional information beyond the email.
We need to wait back and look at the video on that.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to wait and.
But like I'm saying, I don't like being accused of doing something I didn't do and costing the city an absorbing amount of money when I did not. And if you look at his bill, you'll see he actually gave us a discount. And he also didn't charge us for mileage, email correspondence, and phone calls.
Okay, well, I think this is a good time for me to say that I spoke with Lee today before the meeting. As everybody knows, he was supposed to be here tonight. He will be here on Monday. And so, I guess, he can clear some of that up. I'm assuming that Michelle will be here on Monday.
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding. If, if for some reason not, I will get all the full information.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The way that I remember all of that, and it may just be me, we all pretty much knew. Excuse me? Did somebody say something?
No, ma'am.
I guess, um, the way that I understood it, we all pretty much knew that Lee had to do cleanup and there was gonna be some extra charges. That we knew. And Lee has expressed that he has, has had help. And you have even said, you've reached out to Lee on several things. So I'm assuming that that's a culmination of what the extra charges is, not that anybody was accused of anything. I, she did, like I said, well, she needs to be here to respond to that.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody else have anything? If not, I'm gonna call for a measure to adjourn and move into our budget workshop.
I mean, who's gonna adjourn?
Second discussion. All in favor of meeting adjourned? And I open the budget workshop in the city of Vernon, set through thirteen twenty-two.
Are you all the same?
That's what the budget meeting?
You're gonna sit there?
No, you can go. You don't have to stay there.
See, you should have just snuck right on now.
Be safe driving home. I was gonna say that during my conversation with Mr. Lee today, the reason that he didn't feel like it would be beneficial tonight as much as Monday because Josh is coming, the auditor is supposed to be coming about the audit. He, I asked him, we discussed just briefly about the budget. And, um, he's going to, said that he would get a copy of the audit and get a copy of the date, what Karen has on the budget between now and then and look over it. He did say that he could help with the budget. If council, we know that that's gonna incur more costs.
He said he was gonna help her.
But he did say that he would be willing in the event that it was necessary.
If he's willing to help her, can he have a sitting?
Well, that's what I'm saying, he'll be here Monday night.
Oh, to discuss that, okay.
He, I'm just telling you, the conversation that I had with him today, because he was supposed to be here at the meeting, he saw that he really wouldn't be able to answer questions concerning the budget because he's not looked at it. Um, he did say though, that he would get a copy of the audit and him and Josh would be here for the meeting and then council could decide. I asked, was that something that it was needed, given the circumstances? Would he be able to do? And he said that he could help and that he would, but that would be at the council because like I say, it's gonna cost us more. There are certain things that's in his contract to do that, you know, we pay him to do. And then there are things that are not. And he's, he's been very helpful. He's done things, you know, he hasn't charged for.
That's why the audit is better.
Yes. And so, but I just want to let y'all know that he did express that, that he would, um, if needed.
And I can understand her point. She never did it before. You know what I'm saying? I mean, this is, that's not an easy task. Even small places where we had to do the budgets for departments, it's not an easy job. It's just not, you know, because I've had the experience of going in four departments and that's even harder. You know what I mean? Because you got, I mean, dealing with figures, it's not what you think it is. And making projections, you know, I mean, it's gonna, you know, all that. It's not an easy job. You got to stay on, and she's just starting out doing this, so.
I mean, even doing your hassle.
Thank you. Now it is.
I got this from the mayor. Did anybody get a copy? Looks the thing like this, it would have been a copy?
No.
I don't know that.
Karen, he didn't have you or Rose make a copy of this?
I thought I had something in the package.
The only thing I had was the paper that he had, that Rose had to cut.
Okay, yeah.
That's in here, that's the only thing I have.
Okay, well, I may have misunderstood him when he left this information.
No, he said that, he said you. He called me and said, I thought he said you had all this stuff.
Yeah, but he, when he brought, I'm telling y'all, when he gave it to me, he told me that it was copied, that this was my copy. So I was saying that he gave me the original.
No, he told.
He talked to Rose.
His stuff.
Rose was. I do have.
You have the information, that's what he told me. So I was just saying, when he told me. I think he has all the information that he told me about what we need to discuss about the budget in there.
Okay, I have, I was just asking, if it had been made.
I think his mind was on.
Who keeps traveling, God bless him. Family member who is going to his birthday.
But he did say that, he said you had.
Yes, ma'am, he, he decoded.
And I just saw the chicken scratch, so.
It's what, things that he wanted to discuss being added to the budget, let me go through this.
That folder he had in there.
Yep, that's part of his. And so, I guess, um, some of that's on there, but he made notes.
He scraped all of it, boy.
So.
Well, I would want to have on that folder sheet that says putting budget is on the budget.
Oh, that's, yeah, I seen that when he said to put in the budget, this sheet.
Okay, well, and to be honest, guys, like I said, there was more, it may be double the information.
Did you get this, Joey?
It's, it's in, that's in the packet, but this is separate. This is three pages with some stuff more now that he wanted.
Yours is three pages?
Yeah, no, this is not the packet that he gave me right here that I thought y'all may have copies of, but you don't.
No, we don't have copies.
Okay, so.
He said that you had it. Because he called me, he said you had it.
No, it was just a miscommunication between he and I. He wrote on here, number one, the Florida Senate Local Funding Initiative Request for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. On page two of the five, where it reads a total of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and sixty cents. I don't, it doesn't say which page in the budget or anything, so.
He just had put in budget, put in budget, he just have all these notations and put in budget.
And these are his notes too. Trey was supposed to be here to answer some questions on the grant about the road. You know, we've all discussed that in the email. But Trey wasn't able to come.
Yeah, he's being hit at all.
He was going to, according to Mr. Gary, Trey was going to try to reach out to Chad or somebody and give some of that information.
He was gonna get with Chad. That's what he told me. He said, Chad's gonna get with Chad. He's trying to give the information to Chad. Is that what you got?
That's, that's what I was told, but that's not, this is written down from Gary.
Well, he told me on the phone that Trey was out, because I had told him that Trey was planning on coming here because he wants to discuss how maybe he could help us with those streets.
Yes.
Okay. And so he told me that he had spoken to Trey, Trey couldn't come, but Trey was reaching out to Chad.
That's what I was told, and I was gonna reach out to Trey this afternoon to see, and I did not get a chance to do that. So, I'm going to, I can sit here and read this to you guys, and y'all are. Mayor may not understand it, so the best thing to do, I guess, is just give this to Karen and have her make copies of it.
Is there something in there about the SCADA system?
Okay. Yes, there is.
Okay, he, he sent me a bunch of stuff, wanted me to go over it, the numbers, and I got that if you want it, but.
He sent you a bunch of stuff?
But just about that.
Just about SCADA?
Yep. And I've got that if you want it, but I, I mean, you may be at a point you don't need to.
It's a way to begin. Some of these things have got to go in the budget.
Okay.
It's his recommendation that it go in the budget.
Well, don't we have it on this page?
Is there more? There's more besides this?
Okay, Grace, let me just, oh, let me say, on, on the SCADA system, the engineer cannot tell us how many SCADA systems we will be able to do to the price increase. the engineer cannot tell us how many SCADAs we will be able to do to the price increase. On materials and labor, we are trying to do all, all of them, is what he was told. Um, this is on our grant, which is the ten lift stations, the monthly bill for this, for the ten phone lines, or cell phone connections, that's gonna cost five hundred dollars a month, plus an annual cost of about thirty-five hundred a month. For the monitoring is thirty-five hundred, so. The six thousand a year will be the phone bill, plus thirty-five hundred dollars, which is gonna be an increase of ninety-five hundred dollars. That needs to be added to the budget. If this grant's finalized, then that's the extra cost.
It's more than that.
Huh?
Well, I've got the same thing.
You got the same.
That he got, but, I mean, it's broke down. I got you some raw numbers what it's gonna cost you, because they've got more than ten sites, they've got fifteen. And I add in one more site, being sixteen sites, um, for monitoring, um, the phone bill alone, the cell phone alone, will run you ninety-six hundred dollars, unless you get a break, ninety-six hundred a year.
Okay, so is that his numbers or not?
The monitoring is gonna cost you, now, mine's based on sixteen, not ten.
Okay.
Because in this letter, it talks about fifteen new phone lines, and I looked and seen what they're putting about, and they put it everywhere but the water tank. Now, you may not be able to put one there, but maybe if you alleviate your communication problem with that, I don't know. I don't know nothing about this system. But anyway, the cheapest way out is gonna cost fees every annually reoccurring. The low end is twenty-one thousand, five hundred, and the, uh, high end is twenty-three thousand, two thirty-two.
Twenty-three what?
Twenty-three thousand, two hundred, you might as well say, I'm just random them all. And the only difference in them two prices is the monitoring.
That's what it's gonna cost.
More advanced monitoring, or a little bit less monitoring. And the price difference in them two is only about less than two thousand dollars total.
Okay, well, um, I was concerned with the ninety-five hundred going in the budget.
So the quotes that we have that come from phone process themselves is no good?
No, no, no. The first thing we see on the quote is, you know, it's, uh, if you order ten or more, they're twenty-nine, sixty-eight, okay? But in the letter, it references back to that number and says, they don't, they're anticipating it to be, uh, about twenty percent higher than that. So, I didn't really look at the cost, because that should be covered by the grant. But you were somewhere around, I'm gonna think fifty-seven thousand.
Well, from, yeah, from what he, from what he explained to me and what's written on this paper, this is, these numbers aren't covered by the grant, the grant's gonna pay for the other system, but this is the, the annual fee that we're gonna have to pay every year to run this.
And there, there's options, options in here for different things, and I could give you three pages of figures, but I figured it on the best piece of equipment, and then I figured it on the monitoring, both ways, and the cell phones at fifty dollars per cell phone, per site, you know?
Is my understanding, this hasn't, this, this isn't completely approved yet?
No.
This grant?
Mm-hmm, I was told that it was, it was funded.
Yeah, who said it was?
I was funded months ago, cause I knew nothing about this until I read in the paper that y'all got approval for ten lift stations to put SCADA out, and I came to here and some of the council didn't know about it. I don't know where it came from.
No, I don't know where it came from either.
And you see, they're, they're talking ten, that's probably all that's covered by the grant, but if you add five more systems, it's gonna cost you the, the fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more out of your copper just to buy the system. You know, he didn't give me no information either. I'm just going off of the papers he sent me. Because if you, if they only, if they only granted you ten units and you put in fifteen, you're gonna pay the double. But what I was giving you was the recurring fee going up every year.
That's what he's giving us here on ten, is.
And maybe that's all they're talking about, but the letter that Dale wrote to him.
What does it say?
It says, uh, you know, about fifteen lines, they're talking about putting it, all ten lift stations, three wells, and the wastewater plant, and the spray field.
Yeah.
And then I added the tank, making it sixteen, to try to make it at one unit, uh, that's all I added to. But the lowest end is like twenty-one thousand, five hundred. You might get phone lines cheaper. I don't know. Maybe you can, cause you're buying so many of them.
All we're talking about was the ten lift stations, we, we didn't talk about the rest of the meeting.
But if you, you, I don't know nothing about their system, but if, if you were to go on with that, and this system could control your wells and tanks, you'd be, uh, you'd be money head to go on and do that at least.
If you have to fund it.
Well, you gonna have to do something, because these wells over here still ain't running. And I don't know what to tell y'all. I've done everything I need to do.
And that's the ones with the big pumps?
No. This one's right here at Old Fire Pond. Basically, we're running on one pump. Now, we can always get in there, turn them on, but we cannot turn them on, turn them off like they're supposed to work.
Okay, well, the good news is that the mayor says he'll be back on Monday.
Now, what I told you could be wrong, cause he, like I said, he gave me no direction. He said, see what you think this is gonna run.
Yeah, well, my concern is about Chad, that what, what, what's covered in the grant and what's not. Cause I remember ten.
Ten, that's why I apologize.
And.
That's all that was discussed.
So we're gonna need to know, if, if that's all it's gonna cover, then we're going to have to come up with the other funds for the other five or six.
But to me, you're gonna have to come up with the reoccurring cell phone monitoring.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be forever.
Yes.
Every year.
So.
And, and this is only one quote? I mean, if you go out and bid, I guarantee you that's three.
Lots of trouble of going through the grant process, um, honestly. Excuse me? Is that a little louder? The only one that, you up that way?
SCADA systems are great, and he's got the money to upkeep them.
Well, it's okay. What are the other options?
I don't know what options. You may have to go with SCADA system. Of course, the whole industry's going to. But you, you, you need to understand that you get a lot and it takes out three of them. You, you got to have the money to go and repair.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, I mean, do, do you know of any other option other than this system?
I know of different SCADA systems, yes. I don't know calls. I haven't crossed out a SCADA system in years.
The guy was that came and gave the talk about monitoring every line from the wells and everything, and all we had to do was put a cell phone in each lift station.
That's what, that's what.
I know that this guy said, the guy that came from, he had just done Mary Esther, and he said it's ten dollars a cell phone. And when they were, the council at that time said a hundred dollars, cause we had ten lifts, he goes, well, you don't have to do it with lift station. So who was that guy? Cause he was from the state. I just, I mean, I was sitting in the audience the whole time.
I don't remember.
I remember the guy talking about, uh.
Yeah.
But Jimmy, what did you say?
That wasn't involved with a grant.
I don't think so.
No, but I mean, I'm not gonna give it some.
But understand that if, if you are gonna accept the grant, this is not who you're gonna go with. It could be, but you're going to get three quotes from somebody. I'm just telling you, I don't know anything about this at all, about this particular SCADA system. It looks like it's pretty basic, from what I can gather, but I've never even heard of it until I got this.
Okay, well, hopefully we can get some more information and some better numbers. Do we need to be looking into that?
Hey, this, this is my question. Two hundred dollars for the, for the year?
It fits with the, he's telling us that this budget stuff gotta go in, it needs to be.
As far as I remember, we ain't never put nothing like this. Cause the thing is, some of the grants are fifty-fifty, some of them you don't have to pay back, some of them you ask them, you're talking about three and a half million dollars.
That's been my concerning question the whole time.
You can't just plug in three and a half million dollars in a grant, come in under budget.
Well, you don't have it, money, you don't have it.
This, this is the thing. I know some of the grants just say, we're approved, just this first one, the fifty-fifty, you see, he has to pay back fifty, uh, just say twenty-five percent of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know what that is off the head, but the thing is, that's what you put in the budget to cover that grant. You cannot log in three and a half million dollars. I know Gary wants us to do these projects, and they need to be done, the wells need to be done and all that, but there's no way, there ain't nobody can come in here and plug this, and I'll be, I'm telling y'all right now.
Yeah, I, I agree. My, and my point's been, I.
Fred Fox ain't been here?
I always thought that the money was given for separately, and of course, it, it just doesn't go in, it just, there's a place for the money.
It is.
But internet thought this way, I've had questions about the whole time, because I've never seen it done like that before.
Well, we never done it.
I've never seen it done. I just told Rick to win.
We didn't put it in if it wasn't here. And that's why I always said, I don't understand how you put something in, we don't.
They told us this was on grant. I, like I told you, I don't know anything about this.
Cause you put in for grant, we don't get it.
Well, and even, but the grants, we did get, they're, they're separate.
That's what I'm saying.
I think they're attached to, they're in the budget, but not the way that he's talking about.
Not the way he's talking, he's talking like we got, we have this already. The way he's talking about putting it in the budget's like we already have it, and we don't.
It hasn't changed, Ms. Ms. Glenn, to you. Different grant is awarded by point system, some of them are awarded by point system. We can put it in and get a discount, some of them pay back a certain amount, we see, some of them get, uh, completely, uh.
He was, like, we don't.
And that's why I questioned our certain things that have been said, let's put it in the budget, as far as grants go. Have we been approved for that? Because I know that we have to account for that money, but if we've not been approved for it and don't have it.
And don't get it.
What, how do we put it in the budget?
I ain't.
Now, I know that there's a process of having to account for every cent on the grant side and on just in, in our funding side, but him saying we need to put it in like this, it's not gonna work. We need to figure out, we need to go back and look maybe at previous years.
Well, I don't see it on there. Previous year, I don't see it on there.
We, that's what I'm saying, and not everyone that I have, but I've been here since nineteen.
It's not on here. I, mm, I never, I never.
I know we have to account for the money, but I'm not sure that it.
You never had that at the line.
That's a question for somebody else.
You don't sit down as a group and at a table and, and throw out a figure, and everybody discusses it instead of having to do it like this, I mean, where you can sit down and.
We're doing now, but we have to look at the numbers that we have.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, for him to just be handing you figures and.
Well, that's why he's put it, for us to discuss as well, and I'm, I'm not sure if he's understanding how the money's supposed to be put.
How it works.
I, I, I don't, I know that he's got years of previous experience within the city, but I'm not sure about the grant part of it. And I, I believe that we have to account for, I know that we have to account for any money, but where it goes, the way he's saying it, I don't believe it's the correct way to go about it.
I don't know about any means, but I know, just for instance, if, if they did with a lot of grants that y'all have as well, and, and they, they have separate entries, so you can see it in the budget, but it's not, it's clear, it's not money from the taxation or other sources that's.
Yeah, we have to list it, but it's not. You can't take some of his grant money and put it in water and sewer, if that's not where it's supposed to go. It's basic, I'm just put it out.
Yeah.
We, we can't do it that way.
And if it's Rose, we can't move it to water and sewer.
No, so we're gonna have.
Whatever it's for, that's what we have to use it for.
We're gonna have to get some better instructions and information on this, on the, where the grant money is.
And what.
All of us supposed to hear, man? All of them coming back, man?
As far as I know, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna slip away from this data, information, and move on to this, um, number four. And this I fully agree with, we need to, um, find five thousand dollars for our budget for the two cameras, for the walk-in and shares office. We've all agreed on that. It's just a matter of.
What would that go on?
Hey, I wanna hear that, me, what, what are the, what are the four?
They are, like, you seen Amber Lurps?
Right.
Okay, this is something similar. If a situation arises, say out of state, in Alabama, that they're a murderer, and he's in a blue truck, and he's tagging a person such and such, then they place a camera, and they're able to check, type in that specific information and see if it's came through.
I got you, okay.
Which direction. What he's asking.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
You know, Jason, they gotta be watching.
Yeah, it's not like, um, it's not like closed caption TV, it's specific to, like, he's not gonna be able to tell if.
He's not gonna watch.
Get out and go to.
Put one to Squid's house?
Yeah. It's not monitored that way. But the way he explained it, that's by incident.
Right.
You know, in cases of kidnapping or, you know, anything like that, criminal that they can, once they have some information, they can put it in their system and then tell them, if cameras pick it up during a certain time, whatever. And they're twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and we discussed and agreed on two issues. Yes, one coming, cause they, they only catch them one way.
I'm seventy-nine. Going out of seventy-nine.
So, Karen, you wrote that down, huh? Um, the other thing was, um, let's remember, um, uh, Jimmy Cook's contract, the rate has went up thirteen hundred dollars a year.
Is that for the?
That's for his contract, a year, going up that much, a, a year. Correct, Jimmy, that's what he's committing. Okay, well, while you're figuring, um, he has number six on here, and, um, wastewater sampling is going up to ninety-nine hundred dollars?
Listen. When we got our new permit, we had to start sampling a whole lot more. At that point in time, I gathered up information, and I think I turned it in to Karen. He asked for it. But to tell you what it was, I don't, I do not remember, but if it's what I gave y'all, then that's what it should be. It was gonna be a substantial increase. To the ten, probably.
Okay, and, and there's another one on.
Wait a minute. If it didn't go up that, I think I calculated what it should be.
Okay, well, he's got wastewater sampling goes up to ninety-nine hundred, and then he's got water sampling goes up to four thousand a year, so that's.
That's the same thing?
I think that's total. I know that's gotta be total.
At this time, I'm going to take this information at the end of the meeting and give it to Karen, and ask Karen that you or Rose make copies and have these available in the packets.
I will, uh.
And then if he's here, he can explain it and.
I will give you, if you give me until Monday, I'll have you what the number actually is.
Okay.
Cause I just don't remember it. I just wrote it down and gave it to them. You understand that that's a, to agree, you know, I can get you pretty close, but I can't get to that on, cause I never know what's gonna happen.
Okay, and the other thing, so I've given you all the information that he requested, um, the public, uh, works to purchase second trucks, he's got complete on here at twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and six dollars, uh.
For what?
Thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars and sixty cents for the fire department brush truck. Karen, you found the money for the brush truck, my man? I thought about two months ago, we discussed it, did, what, did you find that that money had been designated?
It's been designated, but we didn't get it, I was still trying to get it retrieved and, um. The Kevin partner? Cause they were researching, cause they got the money for the, um, city truck, what, was it twenty-seven thousand?
I know they were saying we couldn't use that money instead of using the city truck, we couldn't use it for the brush truck.
No, there was two separate amount, it was.
I could have sworn that the money had been found in like sixty, something like.
I'll go back and double check, it'll be, the information will be in the package.
Oh, that truck was more than twenty-seven thousand.
The what, which truck? The brush truck was. And the other one was.
Was that the thirty?
You're right, you're right.
Uh, the brush truck, he's got it numbered here, thirty thousand, sixty-four, sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah, thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars, maybe it's sixty. And on the public works truck, the second truck, he's got twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and six. And I didn't give you all this.
That was the one that they got.
I thought so.
Yeah, I thought that there was. Yeah, that was the one they actually got.
It, it was, as I remember.
And he's got a two, you have another one? The city?
I think at one time, every time I'd get two of them.
But they only got.
But he only, yeah, but we only ended up.
Get one.
For the one, and then funding for the brush truck.
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Gary may not realize that.
Yeah. And they was gonna get like another one to like bring meters.
That was in their, and that, all that money and all that money. They separated it, you know, this, you're gonna get this amount.
Yeah.
This, this was gonna get this amount, well, we got the amount for the truck. And we were, first they've gotten the money for the brush truck, and I think that's gonna be that sixty thousand dollars that, that we found about two months ago. But anyway, I'll give you a copy of this and you can give it, Karen. And that's always notes on everything, but like I said, we really need to look at, I know we're supposed to document, keep up with all the money. But I'm pretty sure that it's in a separate situation.
Where do they, excuse me, in Bonn, it's, where do they put it as a line item, if you put the grant thing?
Well, it's, it's kinda like they use a legal sized spreadsheet like this, and there's grant column. And then they have the regular budget columns. And then, if you want, I could send. There's.
So we can see it. I think that'd be a good idea, I don't know how.
I'll do that.
Yeah, and then we have to keep them separate. Okay, we have, uh. Some updates, um, updated, hope what we're hearing has added. Things, so where, where are we at, Karen?
Well, like y'all, I, I ran and did what Gary said on the summary and put the grants on there, but I was like, y'all, I don't. But I went through the budget, what was, oh, Miss Lynn, I did check with the, um, county. I spoke to Keith, asked him about the, um, traffic fines, if there's a percentage. There's not a flat percentage, and it, it got very involved, but he said basically, they get a distribution schedule sent by the state. There's a base fine, and there's like twenty-six or more that's taken out of that money. And after all the base fines taken out, we get fifty point eight percent of it. So it depends on the site, the amount of the ticket that the person gets, and then how much all the base fines out, and then we get fifty point eight percent of what's left.
Of the traffic fines.
Right, so. It, and he said, don't count it as, as a budget.
Right, tickets in here all the time, a lot of them.
And he said that a lot of problems too, some of the people that, the, the cops, whether it's FHP or who, if they don't put on there that they're in our city, we don't get credit for it. That they have to actually mark munis- municipality, that's where.
How many do you have that camera on the lights? Is that, or do we have cameras on our lights?
No.
For, oh man, because that would fund the city forever. I mean, every day I watch people run that light.
So basically, if the deputy does it, Mark.
Burn the city in them.
Yeah, we're not, it'll go to the county.
Okay, well, then the next time we'll go see the sheriff, I thought we told him.
Cause they write a lot of tickets in here. They write them all the time in here. You see them, I, I, you know, I see them right now. One time they slowed up a little, but one time they just really slowed. When they first opened that road, I don't remember, they was going down.
Sure, Kevin proved.
Karen, do you have anything to add to?
Well, I mean, I have my notes, I got any questions about, I mean, I just went through the best I could and to get the answers. For like the miscellaneous line items and everything like that, um. The insurance premium that is allotted for every department. There's an amount, but it never shows anything coming out of it, it's actually been being taken out of the financial administrator. Um, general insurance, but you'll notice it, what's being taken out is more than what's budgeted. But I went and added, and it's not, it's the almost exact same amount. So, um.
So it's not any extra money, it's maybe that needs to be moved into the profit.
Right.
Either that, or we need to figure out how to.
Separate it?
Separate the premiums.
What is that, but don't you pay, you pay all these monthly premiums, or you pay one?
No, we, we pay, I think it's quarterly or, yeah, we don't pay it all at one time.
No, what I'm saying to, I don't need to go at one time, you know, for all the departments.
Right.
That's why it's under administration, because it's hard to separate.
Right.
Department, they'll.
Cause it's not separated on the, on the invoice.
So I would just keep it in there.
And then all we'd have to do then is just take out the, um, insurance out of all of the departments. And add it off to the financial administrator, so that way it'll even out. On the fire department, y'all had some questions besides the insurance. Um, at the bottom, the one hundred stipend, I, it appeared on last, on last year's budget. But that, there's none that I can find before that from what's the information I have on the budgets on the computer. It does not explain, I mean, what it's for.
But don't they get that when they come here?
No, that is the, what they get from the county is. Uh, the W, uh, the currently payment says at the top. Yeah, I'm not sure, like I said, there was nothing, I could find nothing that explained to me what that seventy-seven hundred and then the. The budget for the, for ten thousand. And again, on six oh two, other long-term obligation, that eighty-four fifty, even though it doesn't show anything coming out of it, that has been the same amount since fiscal year twenty-twenty. That's, that line item has stayed the same with that amount. And I have looked through all payments in there, and I can't find anything for eighty-four fifty. Or even, I even tried to buy it and have maybe it was two payments to something, but.
So the money's just been sitting there for a point.
Right, that same, that same amount has been on that line item, and I don't know what it's for.
Did you go back to, um?
I went as, like, far back as I could go on the band.
And it only shows up in twenty, what, twenty?
It's back, yes, twenty-twenty is when it started. And the professional services, cause it doesn't, doesn't have a budget to it, but there was five hundred dollars taken out of it, that was from. Um, they retrieved the bus from the fire department, that was the charge for that, that was in January. That's why they put it there, because it was a professional service for the fire department.
Come on, we need to get the bus away.
Yes, sir.
The fire department took the bus away?
They had somebody.
Somebody come get it.
I noticed on, on this right here now, and me and you talked about, um, the building. Remember we were talking about the building and how it was? You know, we're still making payments, but I don't see that paper on.
The insurance?
The cop note.
Oh.
You know, remember it was a USVA thing?
You are correct.
And it's not on this. And I don't know, I don't, do you remember how much that was?
No, but I've got the notes, I forgot all of that in my office.
Yes, yeah, I found out the last year that we were still making payments on the third one.
A thirty-two-year-old building, you're still making payments.
And I thought that it was, well, I thought it was paid for by grant.
It was, it took USVA, they had to be paid back.
Oh.
How close, Karen, let me find out how.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got all that written down in there.
There's more to me that, that I'll be checking. And that may have something other to do with that other long-term obligation, the eighty-four fifty, that may have something to do.
That, I think that's how much to pay me.
I've got all of that in here. Cause I went through every folder in our filing cabinet.
So on the budget summary, we're at five million, eighty-nine thousand, four sixty, eighty-five?
Well, that includes those grants on there, so you have to be careful.
Yeah.
So you're.
Cause I was gonna say, that's a lot more than what it was last year.
Yeah, but that, yeah, cause it wasn't that high until I added all those grants and.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's all the same, I, I knew that wasn't an accurate number.
And there's a offer that is in there, that, that amount, we got paid to base, okay?
Let me ask you that. Have you, Karen, have you, um, joined the lead-up quote?
Yes, yes, sir.
You did?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You may be telling us to get a phone call.
Yes. Well, thanks.
About either them or, um, call the, the, um, phone play clerk. Or call Margaret in Mossaw.
About to get at with the grant.
How do you do it?
And somebody will be able to explain that. I know that they don't all go together, I mean, we all know that, we know that we have to account for the money, but it's not legitimate, but that's what I, our, our budget runs under two million.
There might be some resources too with the Florida legal cities, they may have some.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, we're still dealing with inaccurate numbers, but we're.
I felt good about it until I added all the grants, and then I didn't feel good about it.
Well, well, let me ask you this, before you added all the grants, what big red flashing line, right?
Right.
That's a good sign.
Okay.
No red numbers, no.
When you added the grants, is that where you think you went wrong?
Ma'am?
When you added the grants, you saw a difference?
Well, I got big, big jump because of the amount of those grants, and I'm, and I, well, if you look at last year's. Yeah, it was a huge, lungus difference.
Yeah, you're talking three million dollar difference.
E- exactly. From last year.
We were just, just from the grants. Just over two million last year.
Yes. Cause Lynn had mentioned that the last thing talking about, if it's, we don't have it, how can we? Now, like I said, the only one I know for sure we definitely have is the offer, we do have that.
I know we have the offer file.
Yeah, we, we got paid to those.
We also need to make sure, if you have not already, um, we all recall last year, we had to agree to use some of those funds to cover the shortfall. In last year's budget.
Going to get that, yeah.
It was between fifty and sixty thousand. And I'm pretty sure that was out of our, cause that was active, Karen, that's fine.
With those rates?
Ma'am?
With the rates?
No, ma'am, it was, um, remember we had a shortfall when we started last year, we thought, we had the money in the budget.
Yeah, and we had.
And we were a hundred and forty-four out, and we made up all the difference, but I wanna say fifty-three or sixty-three. And that was to come out of our. So make sure of that here, please. Does anybody else have anything? I'm only there.
So he's coming, this lady is waiting award, waiting for the, that's what he's coming.
You talking about the mayor and the grant?
Right, well, he's saying the CDBG got awarded, and the, uh, legislator was awaiting award. So he just automatically thinks we're gonna get.
You would have to ask him, ma'am.
I hope Lord, he's out there ready to talk. So we're gonna finish this up on my, is that what you're gonna say?
I thought, yeah, I was gonna ask everybody, have anything you have to do with looking. I think we've got to separate the grant funds, find out where they gotta go. And get the correct numbers on, you know, things.
Um, can we make sure that the fire department has a copy of their budget?
Yes.
And, and read, uh, cause Jimmy told me that he didn't have much, so.
The fire part?
Jimmy told me he didn't have.
Oh, the grant team?
Yes.
Okay.
It's.
So you'll have changes in all this?
Right.
And I guess we'll just proceed Monday? Out, see if need, set another meeting, how many get?
No worries.
You know, the numbers of the grant. No, the parade of funds, the fire of funds, the budget is not fun.
Oh, he's stuck in chips and dip.
With nobody else has anything, should I have a record to adjourn?
A report to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second it.
Second, Colin Faber, um, David.